Okay. Good evening, fellow residents of Town Wintor. Tonight is the Wintor Town Council Meeting, April 7th, 2020. We're held remotely and it's being held with each person in their own individual homes. And we are completely totally socially... Since this is a remote access, anyone who would like to publicly comment through public comment, And leave a message and we will call you back. I'm going to call the meeting to order at present time. Denise? Denise, please, the roll call.
Counselor McFarlane?
Here.
Counselor Flackhart? Oh, here, here. Counselor DeMarco?
Here.
Counselor Christopher?
Yeah.
Counselor Honan?
Here.
Counselor LaCorte?
Present.
Counselor Farino?
Yeah.
As President LaTerry?
Yeah.
President Boncory?
Here.
Thank you.
We will now give the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all.
All right, please all stand for a moment of silence. We would like to remember the people that have passed away over this coronavirus catastrophe. And we'd like to have a moment of silent prayer for all our first responders and working in the healthcare district who are doing such a great job to contribute. They're putting their life on the line every day for us. Please give a prayer for them. Okay, thank you.
Phil, if you're on your phone, turn the audio off on your computer. Just go to the little speaker symbol and turn it all the way down so we can eliminate the echo.
Is that better? Hello? We will now have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. Motion has been made to approve the minutes. After any additions, any comments on the minutes? There are none, we'll vote all votes. Denise, please, uh...
Counselor Jero?
Yes.
Counselor Flackhart?
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Christopher?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor LaCorte?
I abstain as I was not present.
That's right. Counselor Farino?
Yes.
As President LaTerry?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to hold the council record after new business. And there are no public hearings today. And we have a good deal of correspondence. And I'm going to read the names of the people who attended correspondence and get the evidence of the record. We have Rebecca Ferrulo, Elaine Malios, Robert O'Leary, Diane Sands, Judy Hanlon, Debbie Nieland, Donna Segretti Riley, John Batabriano, Suzie Maguire, Astrid Wiens, Michael Demento, Robert Demento, Sharon Legner, Frank Constantino, and Jean Luc Pierre. They were all communications about the Center Business District project. And we have one correspondent from Daughery Donofrio with some questions on this COVID virus. And we'll answer those questions under the town manager's report, which should be coming up. Under public comment, do we have any public comments that's come in, Denise?
We have one that I'll call right now.
Okay. The number is not up on the screen.
It's not coming up. I'll give them a call and let them talk from my mute. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted, Denise.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, this is Denise from Wintor Town Council. You have a public comment?
You have to put it up.
Okay.
Denise, that's not what...
Okay, I'm sorry. What was the name? I am really, really... Okay, and this is on voting? All right, and we can reach back with the phone number? Okay, then we will get the correct number. Steve, we will give you a call. We can take this out and you can hear it. All right, thank you so much. Take care, bye-bye. Okay, Steve, can you hear me? Okay. Her concern was that there's a shrub missing from their cemetery plot. But I have the information. I'll email it to you tomorrow. And that's it for now. That's the only public comment we have.
Okay. Again, the number for public comment is 781-808-6014. Any other public comment coming in? We'll take it to your second public comment addition. I'm going to ask for committee reports. Finance Committee? Counselor LaTerry?
Yes, yes, President Boncory, thank you. The Finance Committee did meet remotely this evening. We had one item on the agenda, which would be brought up for the whole business. And it was recommended with positive action. And again, I will go over that in a little bit. Meeting was adjourned at 6:10.
Okay. All right, any other committee reports? Anyone else have a report? Raise your hand to the board. No other reports at all? All right, moving on. Managers report.
All right, thanks, Phil. So a few things I want to hit on here. First, we heard the community quite clearly concerning the water impacts of the Center Business District project. We did our best to try to minimize those impacts, but it was still clear to us that we needed to find another solution. So the DPW Director, Steve Kala, found a solution. So there will be uninterrupted water service in the Center Business District Water Infrastructure Project for these initial phases of the project. Ground was broken yesterday on the project. So if you have bed down to French Square, there are some trees no longer there. And some other stuff that is normally in the center is gone. And it will remain that way for the rest of this year and the coming calendar year. You can probably hear my son's background trying to jump on this as well. But the project is well underway. It fits within all of the parameters of the advice of the Governor concerning construction projects. And it fits within the parameters of other communities that are in the area that have construction moratoriums, such as Somerville at Boston or Cambridge. This essential infrastructure utility related project fits within the parameters of work that is still being done in those communities. In addition, I took a ride over to Revere today to see one of our close neighbors and what kind of work is being done there. On just going down the beach, there is a residential building next to their footbridge near the train station, which is completely underway right now. There is construction work both outside and inside of the Massachusetts State Police Building right on the beach. There's also multiple other residential projects going on. So construction has died down in smaller residential projects all over the state where you can't necessarily keep the workers safe. But these open air projects, not just here, but in all around the state and this area are still happening. There are some projects happening on Route 93 on the Mass Pike. We are not an outlier in having a project that is going on during this time. That said, we heard the community. We are undertaking all of the precautions that have been laid out in front of us with this unique public health emergency that we're dealing with right now. We also got a specific site plan from Geoso, the contractor, detailing what they were doing to combat this virus and the spread of it on their work site. So we are doing everything that we are required to do within the state government and what they have set up concerning building. And we're following similar communities in the area and what they are doing with construction as well. So that project has started. And like I said, it's going to be going for the near future. But right now, we are going to ensure that that contractor is keeping their workers safe. That is one of the highest priorities with us, as well as trying to mitigate the impacts of the community as much as possible. So then going off of that, in terms of our overall COVID response, as of earlier today, there are 53 total cases confirmed since March 15th, with one deceased, seven recovered, and 45 in isolation. We had some good news today where some PPE arrived from the National Guard and was dropped off at our Emergency Operations Center. So that was a nice little surprise of some masks and gloves and sort of needed equipment for our public health and public safety officials. Same number for the EOC that Phil had mentioned before, 617-539-5848. That's the number that for this meeting, but that's the EOC. Any information that you want to get or email, covid19info@town.wintor MA.us. We're still looking for people who are under quarantine. You may not be on our radar, so please contact our Public Health Department through the EOC. Then some of the particulars, the parks are still closed. Parking is restricted along Wintor Shore Drive. But we're going to be easing enforcement in the area near there so that people have other areas to park in. The federal income tax filing date has been extended to July 15th. Our yard waste facility is open. Our schools are currently closed until May 4th. That is in concert with what the Commissioner, Desi, has announced to this date. No updates on that as of right now, but that could be changing. We, at the parks too that are closed, we're also starting to. We zip tied up the nets of the basketball hoops. We're closing some of the times courts overnight. People are still congregating there a little bit too much. So we're doing our best to kind of defer people from congregating on the areas that we control. We have new food bank procedures where it's only going to be delivery only. So if you are in need of food and you want to get food from the Wintor Food Bank, you can contact us at wintorfoodbank@town.wintor MA.us or call the EOC, again, at 617-539-5848. The food bank will continue accepting donations at the front loop of the coming school, Monday through Thursday, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Always looking for those donations. We know the rest of the lot of the community. But for anyone who has a little extra, it's much appreciated. Our town hall offices are going to continue to be closed to the public for the foreseeable future. That said, there are a multitude of services that the community can interact with over the web, on the town website. And payments can be dropped off and applications can be dropped off at town hall in the mailbox. And if there's any DPW related issues that people are having, see ClickFix is there online all of the time for you to submit specific work orders. And so COVID is really the name of the game right now and where most of our focus is. CBD project is up and running. And we are doing our best to ensure the safety of the community and the workers involved with that project. So that is my update for right now.
Thank you, Austin. And I would like to thank Austin. And I see Meredith is online and Steve are online. They've been doing an outstanding job along with the police chief, fire chief, and our first responders. They are doing the homage for keep this virus under control. Steve, I'd like you to tell the people about how you're going to take care of that water.
As far as uninterrupted water, Phil?
Yes, please.
So we were able to add a few more valves strategically. We transitioned from the traditional gate valve to what's called an insurgent valve, which was able to be installed while the pipe is still pressurized. So we'll install all these insurgent valves again with no interruption of water. And then once we start working down the streets that we need to work on, we'll be able to isolate without any interruption of water. We're also going to put the full scope of the project will be put on temporary bypass within the limits of the project. So anytime that we can't isolate a section and we have to back feet home, the water main will be ready to do that. And we won't shut any valves until everybody is properly fed with water. So I feel very confident that we should have very minimal interruption of water in the entirety of the project, certainly for the first three to four things. There's absolutely no interruption. And I really think we can do the entire project without interruption.
Okay. There are only 23 houses for the first... Is that correct?
So there's no houses that will be affected now. When we were formally going to use the traditional gate valve, we were going to have to do total shutdowns because you have to sever the pipe and drain the pipe. But with these new insurgent valves, a different procedure, it'll keep everybody fully supplied with water.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And I think Meredith is on as well. And I would like to really compliment Meredith. She is a health officer for the Town of Wintor. And she has been doing unbelievable work. Since we opened that EOC on March 15th, she has been doing it every day. And through the weekends, she's been getting the updates from DPH. And she's physically personally tracking every single positive COVID test when it comes back positive. She's doing an outstanding job. And Meredith, would you please tell the people how you're doing that?
Sure, sure. So can you hear me okay? So we've been, I've been using the same protocol that's been put out from DPH for years. So essentially, a confirmed case comes into maybe via a dashboard, an epidemiological dashboard. And once I find, once I find out that we have a confirmed positive case here in Wintor, I reach out to that person and go through an investigative interview, finding out if they've been in contact with anybody symptomatic, if they've had any high risk exposures. For example, if they're a healthcare worker or if they work in a food distribution center or if they're a food worker in any way. Household contacts with the confirmed case. I go through what self-quarantine is. Really, we try to isolate. The best tool that we have right now is isolating the infection and keeping people safe so it doesn't spread throughout the community.
Right now, could you give us a report as to how we're doing?
Sure.
In the other state, in case the state with the number of people that we have, I think we're in pretty good shape as comparison to a lot of other cities and towns.
Sure. So I'm just going to bring up some figures that I just put together with the help of Dan Stone, who's a reserve officer with the Wintor Police Department. So I'm just bringing that so I can share. Oh, never mind, I can't share it. So I don't know if I, Anna, I think Anna's the one that is doing the... Anyway, so right now, as of this evening, we have 53 confirmed cases in comparison to the rest of Suffolk County. We are doing very well. Our prevalence rate is what I've been tracking. Prevalence in Wintor, prevalence in Suffolk County, and prevalence in the state. So we're doing better than Suffolk County. We are a little bit higher than the state, which is to be expected. Suffolk County is really, right, as of right now, Suffolk County has 3,245 confirmed cases and we have 53. So I think that we're doing pretty well.
Does anybody else on the council have any questions for Austin on this report or for either Steve or Heather? I'm covered.
Yes, Counselor. Counselor President?
I do, Ms. Austin.
If this is Counselor Flackhart, I want to commend Austin. I think he's been doing a great job. And I think Steve Kala is the hero of the week.
Thank you, Barbara.
Counselor President?
Who's next?
I'll go next, I guess, Counselor LaTerry. First of all, I also commend a leadership team for doing a fantastic job. Meredith's been incredible. And I thank her so much for that. I do have some questions from the CBD Infrastructure Project. I had asked Austin last week and hopefully he could maybe answer tonight to get a little opinion from the government stage to see if we have any legal, if there would be any legal ramifications if we were to suspend or delay the project. So I first asked, I would first ask Austin if he has an answer from that.
Uh, yeah, I talked with KP Law concerning this. We would be gathering change orders if we were to change the timing on this project. And we are in a very odd gray area with force majeure in terms of what's happening in the world right now. We're not positive of what's going to fall under force majeure or not. So we don't know if we would, if it's going to fall within the subjectivity of us being liable for it or not. So we can't say for certain right now if there would be financial implications or not. And then at this point, we've broken ground. Is there another question? Uh, I don't know if Jim's ready. I can't hear Jim.
I have a question.
Rich, why don't you go ahead and then Jim comes back with another one.
Austin, as Jim earlier stated, thanks for your leadership and the great job our team is doing to keep us healthy. Getting a lot of emails, phone calls, whatever. And people that are calling me want this project shut down for a period of time where we know that there would be no hindrance to our health, our well-being. And I'm sure you're aware of that. And you wouldn't be doing anything or making any decisions that wouldn't reflect that in your best judgment. I was wondering if we could have a better explanation of why we shouldn't shut this down and the reasons, your logic behind that determination.
Um, so from my perspective, I'm going to give an answer and then I'm going to actually pass it over to Steve Kala as well. In my estimation, this is a critical infrastructure project. It falls within infrastructure and utility because it's a water sewer and drainage project. I made the comment recently about this project was first talked about in 2013. That was when there was a first clearly identified need and the desire to put the financing together for this project. This project was something that was talked about, from my estimation, originally in the 1980s when the surface level work was done in the Center Business District. So this is a critical, critical infrastructure project that is necessary to the future kind of viability of the Center Business District. I'm talking about that in terms of commercial or residential, the amount of water that's there and what's been happening with climate change over the last few years. I feel like it's of the utmost importance with a project of this nature that has been worked on for so long in this community to keep going forward. You know, if it was unsafe, then I wouldn't want to send people there to do the work. And we have a contractor that is working with unions concerning the work. They are working through their own thoughts on liability. We have our own legal representation on this. We also, the guidance comes directly from the Governor's office. And I know that this is something that has been debated at different levels of government all over the state. I have former bosses of mine that have put into place construction moratoriums. And the Governor has his own viewpoint on it as well. This is something in my mind that is critical to Wintor. We have very few infrastructure projects and they are quite infrequent happening in town. And the delay that I've already seen with this project, this was something that was publicly announced with the funding on it in early 2017 when the town had a ceremony when the Governor came concerning Masworks funding for it. In my mind, this is one of those like long time coming type of things. Unfortunately, sometimes I feel like I'm living within the sunk cost fallacy in terms of this project of how much has been invested in it for so long. And we net some benefit of it in the long run. That said, our ducks are in a row on this project. It is safe and we are going to have this project proceed until there is something that comes down that tells us that it is unsafe to put these workers to work. Otherwise, the contractor that we've made contracts with wouldn't want their workers out there. The unions would be picketing it instead of just writing letters about it. And I would be getting letters from the Governor's office concerning shutting down the project as well. So we're not at that point right now. The ground has been broken. We've already made progress. And at my estimation, it's a safe project to continue going forward with for the time being. Uh, you're muted right now.
Okay. Could I just have one follow-up with Meredith? Sure.
Thank you, Austin. That was a great answer. Hi, Meredith.
Hey, Rich.
Uh just as uh to ease some concerns of the public uh or uh to enlighten them on the logic of the health uh department uh as to why we are pursuing shutting this job down, uh could you give us a little uh input on that?
Sure, definitely. So this has obviously been a big focus in the last five to six days, and we've been talking about it a lot at the, at the um leadership level, you know, trying to figure out the best, the best approach. Um so from a public health standpoint, so there are two issues. There's the infrastructure work and also the, what could have been the impact on water. Um those were the two things that I was mostly involved with and um and thinking about. So from the infrastructure aspect, um knowing that we are taking the precautions. So for the, to maintain the social distancing and all of the precautions that we're doing that is being put forth by the state mandates and everything else, um the, the contractor has put together a um uh safety plan which involves all things related to COVID nineteen. So there's gonna be dedicated safety pu- safety monitors on the, on, from what I understand, on scene that are, are go- that their job is gonna be to maintain the social distancing and to maintain um all of the other parameters, checking temperatures of workers, um making sure that those, those things are in place. Um I definitely had concerns around potential water shut-offs, and now that that's been bypassed, I feel a lot better about it. Um you know, I, I know that, I think that this is gonna be, I, we have safety plans, we have protocols in place. That doesn't mean that things are not gonna come up. So this is definitely a situation that is gonna be monitored on an hourly basis, on a daily basis, um and on a weekly basis. Given what we know of the current work orders and the, how the work is gonna progress, we, I feel comfortable that as long as these standards are, are met and they're kept, that we can proceed diligently with the, with the infrastructure work. Um I would be amiss if I said that I, you know, I thought that it was gonna be smooth. I'm hoping it's gonna be smooth. But um you know, I think that we're gonna just have to keep assessing the risk um involved. Um you know, and unfortunately, we're in a very, you know, nobody, nobody threw down a playbook four weeks ago and told us how to do any of this stuff, and we're kind of doing it as we go. Um but we're doing it diligently and looking at the guidance that are, that is given to us on infection control, uh what we know about the spread of the virus currently. Um a, a bonus to this is that we don't have people walking around um town very often that are not gonna be interacting with the crews. Um so that's, that's actually a, an additional safety parameter. Um you know, I know that there's a lot of talk about whether or not this should be delayed until um May fourth, but I think, I think this is gonna be our new normal, is talking about pandemic safety and um infectious disease safety throughout the course of our, our life now. Um I think that, I think that we're gonna, we're gonna be very cognizant of COVID for a long time to come. I think that even though we're hoping that and we're hoping that, you know, come the beginning, the middle of May, we're gonna make, we're gonna be able to get back a lot of our normalcy. Um I think that we're, we're re-looking at what life is gonna look like after that, and we're gonna see a lot more of these safety protocols going into place and discussing a lot more about infection control throughout, throughout many different facets of our world. Um so I think, I don't think that necessarily May is gonna end, end the parameters that we're looking at. I think we're just gonna be looking at the world differently.
Do you feel that, uh one follow-up, Austin? Uh do you feel that we have adequate resources to uh police the situation? And do you need help in any way that uh we may have to incorporate some more uh funds for, or uh help uh to assist you in monitoring those situations?
Um I think as of right now, I would say no. Um the GIOSO has put together a very comprehensive plan that if that plan stands and we're able to um to, you know, move forward with what they're saying, I feel comfortable, you know, it's on, it's, it has to be, it ha- these parameters have to be met, that like there's no going around it. That's really what it comes down to. Um so you know, if, if that's done, then we shouldn't have to police very much, you know, no, we shouldn't have staff that needs to be there twenty-four seven to watch necessarily. We have to be extremely mindful and with our oversight, but at the same token, so does the GIOSO.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
I, I ditched, I wanted to make a statement. I've prepared a little something and I'd like to read it, if that's okay, Mr. President.
Cool.
Okay. Um this is for the community as well as the council. It is my firm belief that times like this, that it is imperative we do not let fear derail decision-making, that we do not make decisions based on a level of panic. Feelings are not facts, and we need to look at the facts when we are deciding how to proceed on town issues. Over the past few days, the level of panic has reached a fever pitch, and I believe there is a degree of fear mongering happening here. And I fear that some of the, that fear mongering is being disseminated by some who have been selected to lead in these types of crises, and that is unfortunate. Panic is contagious and can spur others to panic. Panic is in no way constructive. We need to remain calm, follow instructions, and listen to our public health experts. We are and will be following all health and safety protocols during all of the construction. And saying that, I, I would like to again thank um Steve Calla and Meredith Hurley for all their work on this.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions?
Um I'd just like to ask one, one more question. Um Meredith, can you go over a little bit more in depth what the uh specific um parts of the safety plan uh that uh we received from the contractor? And secondly, uh talk a little bit more about who's going to be enforcing that safety plan? Is it gonna be something that uh officials from the town are going to be enforcing? Or is that something that individuals from the construction company are going to be enforcing?
So this is um, this is primarily in GIOSO's court, um based on, it's really based on OSHA. Um and you know, OSHA's procedure with GIOSO. Um so they've put together uh a extensive prepare, uh infectious disease, disease preparedness and response plan. So workers are to maintain a six-foot distance between workers when applicable. Um superintendents will monitor the workers for all signs of illness throughout the day. Um they will get a information session briefing before work starts every day. Um employees who have a sick family member or who've been exposed to someone with COVID nineteen needs to specify that to a superintendent and will be um self-quarantined for fourteen days. If a worker develops symptoms during work hours, they'll be sent home to consult with a healthcare provider. Um the contractor will provide hand sanitizer, eye protection, hand wash stations and gloves, as well as the receptacles to dispose of trash. Superintendents need to remind workers to avoid touching their face and cover their nose and mouth when coughing or sneezing. Um face masks will be provided. Foremen are to wipe down the surfaces during the day with a virus-killing solution. The superintendents are going to be regularly cleaning clothes and showering after work each day. Um and employees are going to be urged to restrict travel after work hours and avoid carpooling with other workers to maintain social, social distancing. Um and if a tou- if a worker tests positive, the worker needs to alert the immediate supervisor and stay home from work, obviously, until they're clear of the disease. So this is very much in um the responsibility of the contractor to maintain this. Um that being said, you know, I, I, I know Steve Calla is that, working very closely with them. Um and I plan on, hopefully through Steve, going down and meeting with them um sometime later on this week.
Did Rob have to stand up?
Yeah. Yeah, can you hear me? So um just, just a follow-up on what everybody's been talking about. So a lot of people, um you know, I, on this call, people have been saying, you know, you know, if we stop the project, if we do this, from what I'm hearing from a lot of people, nobody's saying to stop the project. Everybody's saying, why don't we do a one-month to two-month delay or a thirty-day pause? Um and you know, I kinda look at it, and I've been talking to a lot of you. I, I apologize if I've been annoying over the past week asking so many questions and calling you guys off the hook. But um you know, it is a concern to me and it's a concern to a lot of people. Um and I'm trying to look at it from a worst-case scenario, and I look at it and I say, you know, well, we've been waiting forever to do this project and it is critical. We do have to get it done. It's vital to our town. If we wait one month or two months, what's the worst-case scenario? Well, then it gets done one month or two months later, or maybe a little longer. If we go forward with the project now during the peak of this virus, and most experts believe we are at the, we are at the top or moving towards it, the worst-case scenario, maybe it goes great, maybe I'm being overprotective of the town, but the worst-case scenario is somebody gets sick or, God forbid, somebody dies. And that to me says the right thing for this community right now, in my opinion, and I might be in the minority in this. I would rather push it off thirty days to sixty days, give them time, twenty-four, forty-eight hours to clean up what they have down there, and then let's just shut it down, do a pause, not a shutdown, but a pause for thirty days. Um and then react based on that. The other thing is too, where Revere is going forward with some projects still, and so is Boston, it's my understanding that Everett has shut everything down, and part of their concern was that if it got as bad as it possibly could between Chelsea and Everett, Revere, and Winthrop, because that's, the Everett Hospital is a hospital that Winthrop residents use, especially on my side of town on Revere Street. So if there's a capacity problem there, that's an issue as well. So I just wanted to, I, I, I wanted to hear your thoughts, Austin, on what I said about Everett and why, you know, we shouldn't be looking at the worst-case scenario in all this.
Um so honestly, I don't, I understand your position. Um I'm not trying to look at this as like a worst-case, best-case scenario um type of thing. Uh if these guys can be safe and the company that is employing them can ensure their safety and comes up with protocols to ensure their safety, um again, Meredith brought up, the liability lies with them and not with the town. Um this is one of those things that um, you know, even in Everett, their order, for purposes of this order, essential construction includes only the following work. Work to build or repair roads, bridges, transit facilities, trench work, um emergency utility works, like site-specific building or utility work, work related to the health, construction of healthcare facilities, transportation network. This is similar to a lot of other communities that um we do feel like this is an essential service that we are working on in this town. The infrastructure, and Steve Calla can speak to this, is in critical need of upgrade almost town-wide. This is a fourteen, or thirteen, fourteen million dollar project because of how large and important it is. This is something that's going to be a over-two-year project. Um and honestly, at this point, from my perspective, if we push off for the reasoning that we are concerned about COVID-related um outbreaks happening on the work site, um I would have a very hard time then um lifting that order and feeling comfortable sending the people back to work if we were to use that as a justification. Because um personally, I don't think that um anything is going to change in the month of May, and I'm not sure where this goes after that. So if we use the justification of trying to keep workers safe um during the COVID nineteen outbreak, um I'm not sure when I'm gonna feel comfortable um with us going back on that. Because if that's the justification right now, um it, it's, again, just one of those like slippery slope type of things of, okay, we said it's not safe, when do we ultimately then feel that it's safe? Right now, I feel like we're making um a pretty good case for why it's gonna be safe and we're, how we're gonna ensure the safety of those people. Um and we've had assurances from um the company that is doing the work. Um we've sought the guidance of legal professionals and uh the state on this. Um this is a project that can't happen, and in many communities, this is a project that would still be happening. Um I know there are moratoriums places, but um again, this is, this is something that we're gonna bring up uh potentially um a declaration of emergency later on. Uh these moratoriums are great things to announce publicly uh for politicians to do. Um that said, when they cut out such a large number of projects that can still happen, um I really wonder if they are um trying to limit construction um or are they looking for um another kind of point to hit on top of, uh in terms of everything that they wanna try to do in like a universal COVID playbook type of thing. So um many of them are still around these projects. Even if we did a moratorium, this project would fit within the exceptions of many of these moratoriums around here. So again, it's not that I don't hear you and I don't wanna keep people safe or anything like that. Um this is just a project that uh is very important. Um the community has invested a lot of sweat equity in this over the years. The equipment is here, the contractor has already started working. Um I think it would behoove us to kinda continue forward uh at this point and uh kinda keep this project going. Um Steve Calla, um Anna, if you could unmute Steve, if Steve, is there anything that I'm missing here um in terms of the importance of this project?
No, no, I mean, you touched on it all pretty well, Austin. It, it truly is a very, very important infrastructure project. And it really, it's a very precise project, but it is a project that can happen if we are very precise and diligent and committed to the guidelines that are set forth for the safety. And I feel that we've got very good safety guidelines in place. We are monitoring them. I, I personally witnessed uh GIOSO's stand-down meeting this morning where they went over their guidelines. You know, we, we are, so they have their safety offices, but DPW does too. I'm there as well as Aaron Armistead is, is checking in. We have uh Construction Administration on the job uh with Woodard and Curran, and everybody is very, very aware of what needs to be done to stay safe. Now, it's gonna take a commitment. If we, if we deviate from those plans, yes, then, then, you know, we have, we have issues. But it is a project that can be done. It's a project that is very, very needed, and we're gonna stay committed and diligent and follow the guidelines. And uh believe me, if, if, if things start to go in the, in the other direction, I'll be the first one to go to Austin and tell him, you know, what I, what I think and, and, and to reconsider. But at, at this point, I think we're having a very good place. Uh we have a very, very good and, and capable contractor awarded to this job. And I, and I think that um the timing might be right, actually, with the, with the, in, in, with the stores being closed, that it, we may actually get through a lot of this project with a lot less impact than, than what we initially thought. So you know, I'm on board and I, and I think we should be moving ahead, and I wouldn't say that I didn't.
Can, uh can I go back for a follow-up as far as muted?
Who is that? Identify yourself.
Counselor Latary here.
Okay.
Be there a few minutes. So I, I, to continue on the subject, um there's no doubt, I, I believe Austin has done his homework, um crossed his i's and dotted his i's, crossed his t's. And I think it does legally fit. Thank you. Um I do think we have a project that is probably legally okay to go. I have a concern if it's morally okay to go. We have kids out of school. We have kids that aren't gonna graduate. There are so many things that people have to alter their lives for. There's no doubting that this is a critical need for the town, as well as probably forty miles of infrastructure uh elsewhere in the town that is critical, and we've all agreed to that. As Rob said, as Counselor Demarcus said, we're not looking for us to stop the project. We're looking to delay the project. There is no perfect time. There is no perfect time. With all due respect for the workers of Geoso, and I care for their safety, I'm much more concerned for the safety of the citizens of Winthrop. There are stores that are open, these, uh, these contractors might be running into CBS or whatever it happens to be. We don't, this, this virus that's affected over a million people started from a little province in China, where a handful of people passed it on and so forth and so on. So, what's to say that one worker or any kind of impediments that are brought into town could, could cause a reaction? If it's one person, it's one person too many. If we wait until we see potentially a spike, it's too late. Um, you know, I, I am not an alarmist by any stretch, or I don't believe I am. Um, I've probably been wrong on this from the beginning, thinking it was not a, um, crazier situation as it's turned out to be. Unfortunately, um, it has just gotten to that point where it is, it's affecting people's mental well-being, as well as their physical well-being. I just think with everything else that has been turned off, lives have turned, been turned upside down, businesses have been shut down, kids are out of school, kids are back from college, this is not the time to start this project. Not only are we in the middle of the biggest pandemic to hit the country in a hundred and three years, we're at the peak of it, we're at the pinnacle, and most of all, the time is morally the right thing to do, and I think it behooves us all to do that. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the questions for Austin.
Oh, I'm, Council President, I have a, I have a hand up on the screen, can you guys hear me?
Even I can't see you, go ahead.
Okay, um, I think we hit on a lot of points regarding the CBD, and I wanna thank Austin and Meredith and Steve for their, um, for their explanation there. Um, I'd just like to, to shift gears a little bit, not that this isn't an important discussion, we all know this is extremely important over the past few days here in town, um, but just, Austin, I was wondering if you could update us on the parking situation down Winthrop Beach? I know that it is a DCR-owned beach, but could you just explain a little bit further as to where residents can be parking? Um, and to my understanding, handicap spots are not blocked off, is that true?
Handicap spots are not blocked off, that is correct. Um, so, parking along, uh, with the beach, because that is a DCR beach, is a little tricky. Um, what we are trying to do as a town is relax enforcement in the area, um, on the beach side of the street. I mentioned it today, there are a bunch of cones up. Um, unfortunately, this isn't like in the wintertime during a snow emergency where people kinda can move cones around to use them as spot savers and things like that. Uh, this is to deter people from parking in an area. Um, so, along the beach, um, people cannot park, but we are relaxing parking enforcement in the entire area around there, um, try, to try to alleviate the situation as much as possible, and, um, to the community there, because this is really a residential parking issue. Um, if you are the type of person who is able-bodied and can walk a little bit further from your property, but you know you have a neighbor that needs to park in front of their property or the property next door, um, maybe do the right thing and park around the corner so your less able neighbor, um, can have a spot that's closer to their property. Um, this is something that is a result of, um, this outbreak and, um, a state measure of trying to limit congregation of people, um, in locations, a lot of people are going to the beaches, um, because it's been kinda nice out, like today. Um, but unfortunately, um, that parking has been removed. Um, if anyone does have an issue, um, feel free, feel free to contact my office, um, or the, uh, Police Department, or, um, Mike Di Luiseau, um, our parking enforcement officer, or, uh, hearing agent, uh, excuse me, um, any one of us could, um, kinda help someone out in this situation, um, if they are negatively impacted by this parking.
Okay, and then I'd, I'd just like to raise an additional point. Um, to my understanding, street sweeping is next on those streets that run perpendicular to Shore Drive, is that something that we can, uh, perhaps delay or, or alleviate, to use your term, also?
We, we are still going to do the street sweeping, we are not going to be ticketing for it.
Okay, okay.
Um, so, we're, I, I mean, the more the cars move around, the better job that the street sweepers can do, because they can go actually up to the curb, um, but we're not gonna be digging people for tickets, um, because we know there are limitations with parking, um, kinda town-wide.
Okay, and, uh, just one more point I'd like to raise, um, has the town considered providing any financial relief, um, for those who may have an affect, affected, um, employment-wise or income-wise during this time? I know that, um, a lot of private companies are, are stopping, you know, collections efforts or things of that nature, and I wonder if that's anything that we can do here on a town level to help our citizens who may have lost income, uh, due to the COVID outbreak?
Yep, we are exploring all of those, so, um, we have utility billing. Yeah, Anna, Anna's on the call, um, we have, um, utility billing that goes out, excise tax bills that go out. Those actually went out prior to this outbreak, and they were initially due, um, I believe, March twenty-sixth, um, but we have property tax bills going out. Um, in terms of property tax, um, we are looking at, um, how like extensions would work, um, we don't wanna put anyone out. Um, a lot of mortgages are paid, um, by banks, and money's held in escrow and things like that, uh, but we don't wanna put anyone into a precarious situation with their property taxes. Um, what we are working through is the guidance from the state, um, with the kinda municipal bills that they've been passing on this topic. Um, for a period of time, they were, um, proposing holding property taxes, um, indefinitely for delays, um, that doesn't really work for us as a municipality, because we work off of property tax so much, and, um, an actuary or an accountant, um, can't necessarily do longer-term projections, um, without knowing kinda some parameters of when the money would be paid up to a certain amount. Um, so, that looks like it's gonna be around like a ninety-day, um, delay is gonna come out with that in terms of property tax. But if people in town are in a situation, um, we are always willing to hear people out concerning bills and needs for extension, um, time extensions and things like that, um, and we are willing to take them on a case-by-case basis. Uh, we don't want, we're not gonna be turning off someone's water at this point in time, um, we don't run the electricity, so we couldn't do that, but, um, we don't wanna put anyone out. We already know how hard it is right now, um, for everyone dealing with this situation. Um, I mean, I, uh, my mom, uh, was laid off from her job as well, so, like, I understand how, um, much this hits home for a lot of families, and, um, the town of Winthrop is not gonna bankrupt someone out of this, and we're not gonna, um, look to financial profit off of this or anything like that.
No, thank you, and that's, that's good. Um, and then just the last question about the food bank, I know you mentioned that it's still up and running, but what's the activity been there? Um, is there, is there a need for more food? I remember two weeks ago, um, Council President and maybe yourself, Austin, mentioned that, um, all the food had run out. Is, is that still the case now? Uh, what's needed there, and how can folks help out?
So, we continue any non-perishable food items, um, we continue to seek out from the community, um, pastas, canned goods, tuna fish, um, all those types of things, the shop-stable type of things. Um, and then, um, the chief, who's actually on this, uh, Chief, if you could unmute yourself, um, he can give a quick update on, um, some of the other avenues that we're having of, uh, securing some food for the community.
Sure, thank you. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Um, we've had some incredible people in town donate, uh, from small donors to some large donors, uh, one gentleman who...
Uh, you just got muted, Chief. There you go, you're back.
About four thousand dollars worth of product. Um, also Mia Mori has stepped in and, uh, purchased a large amount of product through the marketplace for us, so we're still taking in, uh, but those big donors has filled the gap of what we needed so far. Uh, we think we're good all the way through next week. Mia Mori has, um, has been a steady partner and has guaranteed future, um, purchases if we needed, and also the Winthrop Foundation is prepared to step in when, uh, the food slows down. We're in this for the long haul, we have to remember that this is not a one- or two-week event. Um, this event could lead us into late May, early June on supporting people with food. Uh, we're in constant communication with the schools to make sure that they're still providing lunches for those in the school district. Uh, we also speak daily with the food bank and Kathy Dixon. Uh, we have a, um, a backup supplier for when we hit our maximum with the elderly, uh, meals on wheels, um, so we are also thinking outside the blocks and with multiple backups on, uh, food security, uh, so far. Uh, BJ's has been, uh, great to us, um, allowing us to pick up over there and expressing our, uh, purchasing and expressing the line for the people who are big donors that need to get in and out, um, they've been great with us, and also, um, you know, just while MS Walker and through the APCC Alcohol Beverage Control Commission has provided hand sanitizer in the town too, I just don't wanna leave them out, uh, so, and also, we received a shipment today from MEMA, um, through the US Army for, uh, supplies for the EOC, first responders. So, we are, uh, good, I've talked to Chief Flanagan, the first thing we do is meet down here every morning, um, we discuss our needs for the day, and then we go out and secure it. So, I know it was a food security question, I just, I wanted to lump it all in together, um, but I think the food bank is under great leadership over there, um, you know, Matt Rhodes and Sean Driscoll, we have wonderful volunteers that are helping them every single day. Um, so, as the needs do come up, we will make sure the council is well-informed of those needs, if we can't provide them through the multiple layer of backups that we currently have in place.
Thank you. Okay, no further questions for the county managers' report. I also wanna thank the chief and the people that are working at Food Bank. They're doing an amazing job, selling those bags every day, somebody's giving out two hundred bags, uh, most of the time it's like around a hundred to two hundred. Uh, now they're gonna start deliveries this coming week, and if you need food, please call, and get yourself on that list, so the food will be delivered to you. Okay, thank you, uh, all my town employees, you did an excellent job in your reports. Uh, we will now move to the school department report, and there was a school committee meeting last night, uh, it was held just like this one, uh, virtually, and everybody was apart from their own homes, and we had a, uh, a meeting, and Lisa updated everybody, uh, Superintendent Lisa updated everybody as to what's been going on with the school, and she's in constant, constant contact with the State Commissioner, they talk every day, and he is, uh, leading them as to what they can and can't do, and we're doing everything possible that we can do to, uh, get the word out and to get kids still getting educational materials. Uh, we also voted on a budget. Of course, I abstained from their budget, because I'll be voting it on the council, but the school committee, uh, is going to ask the council for a needs budget for two thousand and twenty-one of twenty-three million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-and-eighty-three dollars, and, uh, that's almost a twenty, two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-six, uh, three-hundred-and-thirty-three increase over the, uh, twenty budget. Their level funding budget would be twenty-two-thousand-one-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, nine-hundred-and-six. Twenty, I'm, boy, I'm reading that wrong, twenty-two-million-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-six, uh, which would be a million-five-hundred-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-six over the, uh, twenty budget. So, now, uh, Austin, that will be presented to you, so that you can give us a, a total budget at our next meeting, and, uh, I hope you'll be prepared for that, will you?
Uh, yep, Anna and I will be, um, prepared for a budget presentation on the twenty-first. Um, I, I don't really wanna do a Zoom presentation, uh, like a PowerPoint for it, so, uh, I'm gonna, uh, put my lovely wife to work, uh, with some of her video production experience, and rely on WCA TV a little bit, and hopefully make a little bit more compelling of a presentation, uh, instead of me sitting in front of a PowerPoint presentation, uh, but we will be ready for that for the twenty-first.
Okay, thank you, Austin. Uh, old business. Councilor Terry?
Thank you, Council President, I do have a motion that the town council vote to transfer thirty-five-thousand-four-hundred dollars from the special revenue fund, number five-twenty, known as technology grant, to account zero-one-nine-six-zero-five-two-dash-five-eight-eight-one-seven-two, in order to fund the second year of a three-year software agreement with Open Gov for enhanced budgeting and planning software, or take any other action relative there, too. This did come out of committee, the money is coming from the technology grant, which the town gets from Comcast. Um, currently in that account, there is slightly over a hundred thousand dollars, um, this will bring it to, down to slightly over sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, we're in the second year of it, Anna did speak earlier about Open Gov and its effectiveness for the town, and, uh, you know, with her and Austin bringing this to the town last year, it seems to have done really well, we have more concise budgeting and a better timeframe, and, uh, we did move it forward with lots of effort.
Okay, thank you very much. That does not need a second, this came out of committee with a question, uh, is there any discussion or motion? The motion is town council to vote to transfer thirty-five-thousand-four-hundred. All right, everybody aware of the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilor June?
Yes.
Councilor Farquhar?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Horne?
Yes.
Councilor LaCanti?
Yes.
Councilor Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Letery?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, since there's no new business, I am gonna prove full information and regulations, now it's a new business, and, um, as Austin mentioned earlier, we have the declaration of emergency for the town of Winthrop, and, uh, we're, we're producing this declaration of emergency, uh, in preparation for MEMA refunds and, and so on, uh, but I'm gonna read this declaration of emergency. I had a meeting earlier with the, uh, Health Department, and I, uh, had all three members of the Health Department are in favor of the following two orders that we're presenting, and they will be putting out an actual, uh, writing, this will be signed tonight by myself, they will put out a writing tomorrow, uh, including it, and it will be going into our daily, uh, update on the Corona bid, all right? And here is the, uh, declaration of emergency. Whereas the two thousand nineteen novel coronavirus, CO-Bid nineteen, is highly contagious and potentially fatal respiratory disease, the prevail, prevalence of which is increasing rapidly throughout the world, inclusive of the United States and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty, the World Health Organization designated COVID-19 outbreak epidemic health emergency, and whereas on March tenth, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts issued a declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID-19, and whereas on March thirteenth, the President of the United States announced the national declaration of emergency, and whereas on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Baker announced emergency actions to respond to the evolving COVID-19 public health emergency impacting the Commonwealth, including pro, prohibitions on public gatherings of ten or more people, and prohibiting on-premises consumption of food or drink at bars and restaurants from March seventeenth, twenty twenty, until April sixth, twenty twenty, as well as suspension of elementary and secondary school operations from March seventeenth, twenty twenty, through now, uh, May fourth, twenty twenty. The, whereas the council president, Philip Boncory, and the Board of Health, the town of Winthrop, in consultation with the State Department of Public Health, has determined that COVID-19 presents a major disaster which poses an immediate threat to public health, safety, and general welfare of people residing both within and outside... safety, and general welfare of people residing both within and outside of Winthrop. And whereas the town council president of Winthrop, Mass., of Town of Winthrop and its Board of Health have determined that immediate public action is needed in order to prevent or minimize the spread of COVID-19 by and among the people of the town of Winthrop. And whereas it is critical to take additional steps to prepare for our response to and mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 to protect the health and welfare of the people of Winthrop. And whereas declaring a state of emergency will facilitate and expedite the use of resources to protect persons from the impacts of COVID-19, included but not limited to emergency expenditures pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31, and limitations of operating hours in excess to public facilities and. Whereas the town council president, Philip Boncory, of the town of Winthrop and the Board of Health recommend that the state of emergency be declared in Winthrop, Mass., Town of Winthrop. Therefore, Town Council President Philip Boncory of Winthrop, Mass., of Town of Winthrop and the Board of Health of the Town of Winthrop, Massachusetts, hereby declare a state of emergency exist in Winthrop, Massachusetts, of Town of Winthrop. The election, the declaration of emergency shall remain in effect so further notice is given. Pursuant to our judgment, and the conditions leading to this declaration no longer exist. Included in this declaration of emergency is a curfew. That myself, council president Philip Boncory, and the Winthrop Board of Health confirm today that there will be a curfew in the town of Winthrop starting tomorrow evening at 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM. From every day thereafter until the end of this coronavirus, which means no persons in Winthrop shall be walking the streets of Winthrop. Any businesses that are in Winthrop shall be closed at 10 o'clock. Most of them not. I think there's only one or two that stay open past 10. They're gonna have to close because there is going to be a curfew. And hopefully, everybody's paying attention to this curfew because it will be enforced as much as we can with the police department. Curfew is in existence tomorrow evening from 10:00 PM till 6:00 AM in the morning. Okay. Any questions on that from the council?
Yes, I have a question. So this wasn't in our agenda pack, and I'm just hearing this language now for the first time. Austin, I'm hoping that you can address exactly what is the impact of passing this motion. Actually, I'm hoping to get the town manager's perspective on this. What is the impact of passing this?
So this is a local emergency declaration, which is a local motion that can be made that kind of supports what was done by the governor and the president in terms of declaring a state of emergency, in terms of changing of authority or anything like that. That doesn't really come with this. And then in terms of a curfew, that can be done by the Board of Health and the council with the support of the council president and under the charter, yes, under the charter. So KP had weighed in on this, and because it's an emergency motion, it doesn't need to appear on the agenda. So really, this motion would give the town a curfew from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM with limited enforceability. The mindset behind it is trying to encourage people to not congregate overnight as well.
What I'm hearing is it's not like this motion would open up Winthrop's access to emergency money some way. This is really just about imposing a curfew?
So the second part of it is about imposing the curfew. The first part with the emergency declaration. There isn't much enforceability to MEMA or FEMA, how they account for this in the long run. But we have been told by a fair amount of financial professionals that we should declare a local emergency so that when funding is available, we could have it all under the declared emergency, kind of like accounting scheme or accounting metrics afterwards. This also gives us the flexibility in a really, really worst-case scenario. If we needed to commandeer larger buildings in the community that are unoccupied to utilize them as spaces to host some members of our community who are recovering or something like that. It gives the ability to do that a little bit quicker with some less votes involved. Otherwise, the declaration of emergency is in support of the state and federal one. And then the curfew is something that can be done by the council president and the board of health.
And what would be the penalty for violating this curfew? Are we talking about arresting people?
No, we're not talking about arresting people. It would be encouraging them to go to their place of residence.
And I'm unfamiliar with the section of the charter that gives the Board of Health and the town council president this authority. Can you cite that specifically?
Actually, you know what? It's not under charter. It's under state law. Give me one moment, and I can cite that for you.
It's Mass. General Laws.
Yep, one second. It is under Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 104. That is, allows a municipality to adopt a curfew order or advisory. And it requires the approval of the chief executive officer and the Board of Health approval. And the Board of Health could do this independently under Chapter 111, Section 31, or 122. But it seemed like it was better in this case to do this in concert with the Board of Health and the council president.
And I'm wondering either to the town manager or the town council president, what exactly is the benefit of imposing this curfew? We're not thinking that people are congregating between 10 and 6 and passing the virus around, are we?
We do have people that are out after 10 at night. People that are in their backyards with groups of ten to fifteen people along fire pits after 10 at night. And also, if the construction is going to be, company is going to be working from 10 to 6, it's a good idea to have the citizens stay in their houses from 10 to 6 in the evening and not be going down to look at that site and getting possibly close to the people that are working in the town. So, I mean, there are numerous reasons, as well as, you know, I listen to the police radio at night because I happen to have one, and many of the calls, all of the calls after 10, because people are roaming around doing things they shouldn't be doing. And many of the people are not Winthrop people. They're people that are coming in from Revere, East Boston, and Chelsea and coming into our town late at night. This gives the police some kind of authority to get them out of town.
If I have a question, I have a question. President, oh, go ahead. Council President, Council President or Town Manager? Now, I was in favor of imposing a state of emergency, I think, a couple of weeks back. And I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it just, again, confirms the feelings of some of the councilors and many of the residents that we are now gonna shut down one or two businesses that are open after 10 who are looking for any nickel and dime they can get to stay alive. But we think that it's so important and it's such a danger that we're gonna shut them down for that extra hour. And we're gonna eliminate people from walking around, which are few and far between from 10 to 6. Yet, we're gonna have the biggest construction project that ever began in Winthrop. We think that that's okay to start, but we think we should have a curfew between 10 and 6 and shut down businesses that are relying on any potential income as they can. And the council president just mentioned something about construction going on from 10 to 6. Is that, is that going to happen?
So, there isn't, there's only one piece of the project at this point that's anticipated to happen between 10 and 6:00 PM. And that's, I'm sorry, 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. That's the work on Pauline Street. We gotta lower two water mains. So we would want to, there's three businesses served off of that, off of that main. So we were trying to mitigate by doing night work so that they would be closed, you know, during that work. Other than that, there is no other anticipated night work at this point.
And what is the timeframe of that, what is the timeframe of that 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM work? Which I don't, I don't have any problem with, but I, you know, again, we had a briefing of this at the senior center three weeks ago, and it just seems like everything changes from moment to moment.
Was that question directed to me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Steve. If you could just tell me when that supposed work between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM would be happening?
Probably three weeks away from that work occurring. We gotta get the temporary water main up and running first.
Thank you, Steve.
President Boncory, in terms of the curfew and enforcement, you had talked about people walking around in town and congregating and stuff. What about vehicle traffic? Are police gonna actually be pulling over cars that are passing through on Main Street after 10? Or, you know, you talked about like groups of ten and more, like, do I have to worry about having a fire in the backyard with my wife? You know, how, what are we talking here in terms of, you know, of people and enforcement?
There's gonna be a curfew from 10 to 6:00 AM, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Hopefully, the police will be stopping cars. Now, if people have an emergency, if people have to work on the night shift and are coming home from work or going to work, they're gonna be allowed to do that. It's to stop people that are coming in town late at night. Most of the farms that we have late at night are right around that area, between the mobile station and Cumberland Farms and the 7-Eleven. There's no need to be open after 10 o'clock. People can get their supplies earlier than 10 o'clock. There doesn't seem to be any necessity. Look at all the other stores that have had to shut completely. I mean, all of our restaurants are closed, all of our stores that sell products are closed.
Council President, can we have Chief Terry Delante just weigh in on some of the enforcement stuff as well?
Yes.
Okay, hello, everyone. Under Section 104, you know, they're forfeiting $10 or $100, up to a $100 fine. There's no arrestability on this. Cars traveling through, it would be difficult. This curfew cannot apply to people on the front lines. They're essential personnel, which would include everything the governor has listed as essential in his order. So people traveling through would be able to travel through. I would discourage my officers from actually exercising and doing constitutional stop for a violation that's enforced over by ticket only. And certainly, under 104, 300 CMR allows us to actually interpret these sections, Chapter 111, 95 through 116. It helps us interpret the meaning of those sections. So, you know, we would dig into this. We would be practical about it. Again, this is for gatherings, people in backyards that are on private property. The governor's being does not apply to them. I would have to have legal opinion on whether or not we could go on private property. You know, the enforcement of quarantine and self-quarantine individuals is a little bit different. If they are outside their houses, the first thing is to ask for voluntary compliance under the 300 CMR. And then the second thing is an order of the Board of Health, a written order from the Board of Health instructing them to stay in their house. The third phase of enforcement is the Board of Health would have to go to Superior Court to get an order for the police to enforce from Superior Court. So that's how private property issues are handled. On this, if we see groups out at night, if we see a large group during the day in a playground, we break them up and send them on their way. We're appreciative of the cooperation, the level of cooperation we have received from the people in these parks and playgrounds. And certainly, I appreciate my officers who come to work every day in this pandemic and trying to keep social distancing a top priority of their enforcement activities. So that's what I can say about the, how we would go about it. I think we always take a practical approach. We ask for voluntary compliance and then move from there.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you. Okay, there's one other thing, and this is not an order. This is only a recommendation. And I am recommending that anyone that does go during the next many weeks wear some kind of face covering, some kind of, doesn't need to be a mask that, you know, the healthcare providers need. But wear some kind of face covering, a scarf, a homemade mask. Please, social distance. The town of Winthrop is doing very well in social distancing. But please, stay vigilant. Wear a mask when you go outside. Somebody have their hand up?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess I want to direct this to Council President Boncory. I know under some statute that the health director could potentially have complete authority to enforce public health regulations without the approval of her board. Why can't we implement that or have the, direct the Board of Health implement that so Meredith can go about her day-to-day and act immediately to respond to any emergency or crisis that may happen? I think it would be prevalent in this situation and possibly could be part of this resolution or declaration that you're presenting to us.
Well, Meredith is doing that every day. She's in complete charge of the EOC, and she is tracking everything that's going on on a health-wide basis. The Board of Health isn't actually there. Meredith is there at the EOC. But the Board of Health is checking in. And as I said, I had a meeting with the Board of Health earlier today to get these two declarations out, these two orders. As far as the recommendation, that's not an order. It's just a suggestion. And I'm asking the people, please, please be safe. Cover your face when you're out of your house. It's not a tough thing.
Council President, one thing with that? Could I just follow up? So I'm with the understanding that she could have the power to shut down a business right away, which she doesn't have right now. So if she went into a takeout place or any establishment that she feels is unfit, she would have to go back, report back to her committee and not act immediately. So that's what I would like to see in this, if we could.
So let me hop in there. So Phil, Rich, the Inspection Services Division is what is in charge of enforcing at a restaurant or something like that. The Inspection Services Division has been enforcing at our food establishments all over town. Now, in terms of the health depart, the health, the Board of Health and the health director, the Board of Health has the authority to vote and instill the power of the Board of Health and the authority into the public health director. That is for the Board of Health to vote on though, on their own. And the town council can't declare that unilaterally.
Okay.
But in the meantime, Meredith and Al Agui have been checking every single restaurant. They've been going out. Entegality did it twice so far, going to each restaurant to make sure they're completing all the orders that have been given to them. You know, as far as spacing, as far as cleanliness, as far as cleaning the donuts, and as far as checking the temperatures of their workers. If they were not in compliance, I believe that Meredith and Al Agui have the right to close them. So we're not, that's not the situation, Rich.
Could I get some clarification of that from Austin? Do they have the authority to close them? I'll pass you on the information. Thank you.
Could we just get that information, excuse me, the council president sort of circulated to the council? I'm sure that'll be married. I'm sure that'll be mirrored public to everyone else as well, correct?
So, the declaration, did, did any order?
You can just get it sent to the council and also out to the public.
Yeah, and it will be in the report tomorrow that we give out on a daily basis.
Okay.
Everybody see that report. Okay, uh, we're back to public comment. Do we have any public comment, Denise?
Yes, one moment. Can you, everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to call the first one.
Um, again, the number for public comment is 1-718-086014.
Everybody hear that? Can you hear the public comment? Can everybody hear this?
No, you have to put it right up to your phone.
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. Thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you. I appreciate your help, your dedication to the town.
Yes. Yes, please. She is.
They're shaking their heads. They can't hear me.
Okay, well. Oh, hey, Judy. Good.
I wanted to ask.
Okay, if I can hear you, I can, I can report it on what you need to know.
Okay, Denise, can you give us the name and address of the people?
Okay, that was Judy Hanlon.
Yes, she called and sent the text earlier, yes.
Yes. She would also like to know if the council could vote on who would stop the project, who would consider stopping it, and that she just got confirmation from Evie that they're stopping all construction.
Okay. All right, any other ones?
Yep, one moment. You can't hear this at all?
You don't, I don't know if you're not putting your phone up to your phone or what, but we're not hearing them.
What's this?
Okay, I am.
Okay, one moment.
Hello?
Hi, did you have a public comment?
Yes, I did. Dottie Gennario.
Dottie Gennario. Okay, can you turn down your TV?
This is a follow-up.
Can you turn your TV down, Dottie?
And my question remains around the virus, the pandemic situation that we're all in. I would like to know how the town gets the information so that they can forward it on to the state? And then the state in turn reports the number of cases to the town? Are you totally dependent upon people calling?
Okay.
Can you answer that?
Yep, I can answer that. So, it's kind of, it's mostly the reverse. Where I'm, I'm dependent on the state to report the cases to me. I have had a few, a few cases that have been reported before the state through either doctor's office or I've had people call me and say that they just tested positive. And then usually within 12 hours, I'll get the report from the state is how it works.
My question is, we've got a few people that have said they've had the virus but have not been recorded or documented here in town.
Yep, so we definitely run into that. So, it all comes, it all comes, it all comes down to the testing capacity. And unfortunately, the testing capacity was not up to par up until recently. So, I think people, we use the terms not to be confused with presumed positive or presumptively positive. So, those are folks that showed signs that were consistent with COVID infection, yet were not tested, so therefore could not be confirmed.
Things, okay, I think that that's not the route, not the route you should be taking. I think that there should be a way to have it done, tested in the town. If we could run the food clinic successfully, we should be able to run a testing center.
I would love if we had that capability. Unfortunately, the testing is so limited, the test kits are so limited, that they're not releasing them to local health as of this point.
Is there any way that we can add our voice to the state?
I know that, that the town manager and the Council President and also other leaders in the town have been reaching out to the state to see if we could potentially get testing kits. But they're having a hard time even getting the testing kits to the big healthcare organizations at this point. So, in, from what I gather, in the state's priorities, putting it in the hands of local health is not in their short-term plan as of right now.
Meredith, just to hop on after what you said right there. We've been advocating for this for a while, for additional testing supplies. Meredith, you came to that meeting with me, I mean, it was almost a month ago now. It was three or four weeks ago where we met with some of the municipal leaders in Somerville at Partners Healthcare. And it was apparent then that we were going to have issues with testing. So, as it's being ramped up in the area, we're seeking out every opportunity that we can to participate, whether it's to send our public health officials or public safety officials and public health officials to get tested at locations closer to here, to be able to go to Suffolk Downs and things like that. We want to be prioritized, and I'm speaking with our state delegation as frequently as possible, as well as the Council President concerning resources that could come to us locally. We talked to our federal local delegation as well. So, Dottie, we totally hear you. And if we had the testing capabilities in-house, we would be testing. Right now, we're not at that point, but it doesn't mean we're going to stop asking the question and try to get there as soon as possible.
Right, and we, we thought we were going to have an opportunity when Suffolk Downs opened, and it would be close to us, and we could get tested. But they're only testing people that need to be tested, and they're only testing frontliners like a fireman, a police. Fortunately, we've had some of our firemen and some of our policemen tested there, and all of them have been negative. So, that's good news.
And East Boston Neighborhood Health is going to be working with us in the near future concerning kind of having places where we can direct people to go in terms of testing a little closer to home.
Is there any way that you could emphasize throughout the town, keeping distance, keeping a mask on? They walk around town as if they were going to a party.
Dottie, that was just part of my recommendation, that everyone wear a mask, a homemade cloth mask on their faces if they're going outside of their house. Please, wear a mask or a cloth cover.
You could put that, is there any way you could put up that signage like you do at the bridge and like you do at the Regent Street, and take that on a, on a truck? And just drive through town with that flashing and reminding?
Uh, we can look into that, Dottie. Not sure about the driving, the sign around while flashing, but we can post it somewhere and maybe move it to another location in town. The places where we normally post it, like the bridge over by Bela Marsh. Not as many people going over that bridge every day, unfortunately. So, it may not be, may not be as effective there. But we'll find some places in town to put those messaging signs up with a couple of these messages. That's a good point.
Thank you. Any other calls?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I wish you all the blessings, stay healthy each season.
Thank you.
Denise, one more. We have a couple more. Hi, Jack. This is Denise. You have a question for the public comment?
Hi, I'm here.
Can everybody hear him?
Who is it?
Jack Downe. Okay, Joe, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Council.
Yes.
And all concerned, there seems to be a state of emergency everywhere except the Winter Center. This issue falls directly on decision-making made by Philip Boncory. Phil, this period of town history will be your legacy. I hope for the sake of the town, you will be making better decisions starting tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, is that Jack? Okay, one moment. Hi, did you call the Winter Town Council?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed. Who is it?
Hi, my name is Cheryl. And I live on the Avenue. So, we're one of the first areas that will be affected by the water shutdown and the rain on the center. So, I'm very concerned that we're going into the peak of the virus, and everything around us has been shut down. So, wondering if we, I know some of the councilors are with us and shutting down the project right now. I just would hope that the rest would step up and make the same decision. It's really concerning to all of us around this area. Some of us, or some people. We still can't tell whether I said a problem, and that will cause the people who are in this area. So, basically, what I want to say and just for you guys to please make the announcement to you.
Cheryl, can I hear your last name again, please?
It's Pao Lani.
Thank you very much.
P-A-O-L-A-N.
All right, I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one more.
Hello?
Hi, it's Winter Town Council?
Hi, I just want to.
Oh, sorry. Uh, one more. Let's try this one. Hi, this is Winter Town Council? Yes.
Can't hear her.
Lower your TV, please, yes.
First of all, I'd like to ask Stephen Power for, from the Water Department, coming for the idea of the temporary water main so that we are not affected by water shutdowns. Secondly, if it's hard to make a general comment, then ask a specific question. My comment is, I have aligned with vice president's theory in that if there has a major construction happening here in the center, that the people in the major can die. Basically, I can't, I can't, I can't quite understand why this is happening. I agree with both Councilors DeMarco and with Terry in their comments. Definitely, this project is needed. We have had a history of flooding basements, of sewage dams in some people's basements. But this is not an emergency. This is no burst in pipes. These are not sinkholes that need to be immediately repaired. My, my position on this, my comment is, the post-hub of this, this infrastructure project, at least till after the peak of the virus. My second aspect of my call tonight is a specific question. When residents call, when residents witness any violation of social distancing, in other words, workers who are working on this infrastructure project, working closer than sixty feet or observing something that could be dangerous or unsanitary, to whom do we direct our question? So, I went back through my papers and found that Frank Murphy, I assume, is the superintendent and said, and the contractor, is that the person that sends the comments? Or see any kind of violation? That's my question.
Yes, Frank would be the right person for you to contact if you perceive a violation happening.
Could you repeat that, please, Donna?
Yes.
Denise, can you repeat this? I can't hear it. I apologize. Uh, Denise, you're muted. Uh, Denise, you're muted.
In at six one seven two zero seven thirty two fifty three.
Uh, yes, that's still Frank, that's Frank's number, yep. Yep, Frank would be the person for you to get in touch with.
Okay.
Denise, can you fill in the end of that? I couldn't hear the end of it.
Questions, uh, many of them, as, uh, to professionals facing, uh, listed projects or your statements taking place right now. And I, I indicated where, for a long time, we've known that the center has an, an issue. And, and I, uh, you know, for a long time, um, not this time. Everything is, is very, uh, that, uh, that's, uh, okay.
Denise, who's your other phone number?
Yes, that is the person. Okay, will you? You all set? Thanks, Donna. One moment, thank you.
Denise, there's still a three-minute rule.
All right, we got one more, I think. Let's try this and see. I have already called them. Hi, did you have a public comment for the Woods of Town Council?
Hour by hour, I don't know. This is a very serious, serious worldwide pandemic. And by a certain, uh, hour, and then I would, uh, from, 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 from the city and, uh, I want to congratulate, uh, but we really have to be careful about this and we have to protect it above it. Every day, signs tell us that it's going to be getting worse and worse. Thank you very much.
All right, Nick, thank you. We'll take care of that right now.
Okay, I could not hear him, Denise. Could you tell us who that was? And I heard my name mentioned, what was he asking?
Okay, that was Nick Seotis. And he'd like a answer from P. Council Christopher as for the CBD project continuing. He is concerned about the project continuing. And then he'd also like an answer from Council President Boncorry on his belief of the, if the construction should proceed.
I feel it's safe, I think, at Austin. And Steve is doing a great job and Meredith watching it, and we will be safe. The minute we see that it's not safe, it will be closed. But it's safely going forward. Steve, it was up to you to guess that. Who wants to comment?
Yeah, so I guess my biggest concern is, uh, for the safety of the people in the community. And, um, we've heard from the contractor and Meredith, and I think that Meredith, um, did an excellent job. Um, I worked with Austin this weekend to make sure that we had that P. N. Safety Plan in place. Um, and I think that that's going to do a lot of work for the community, um, in making sure that we're moving forward with this as safely as we, um, as we can. Um, I agree with the council president that if any, there are any situations that were to change between now and then, um, you know, then timeline would need to be revisited. Um, however, I, I am inclined to defer to, um, the experts at this point, um, about, uh, just making sure that we are being as safe as possible. That's, that's the question before us and I, uh, trust that that's going to be done.
Anyone else?
Uh, one moment. Nope, I believe that is it for now.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody, uh, on the council have any public relations?
Uh, I have a comment. I think we need to improve this quality for the public comment because it says in and out or it's un- not understandable at all.
I would agree with you on that, Councilor Flockhart. And, uh, Denise and I were chatting privately about this on how to alleviate this, uh, for the future. Um, something else for us to work on. Thank you.
Okay.
I do have one comment, if I may. Um, I, I hope I'm wrong. I, I, I'm very disappointed that we as a whole are choosing to be reactive instead of proactive. I think we have an opportunity and a moral obligation to do the right thing and to shut this project down for a thirty-day period. Uh, and I'm very, very disappointed that we're choosing to be, uh, reactive about this and waiting for something bad to happen instead of being proactive and doing the right thing. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to say a motion to adjourn.
One more thing, Phil. Uh, President Boncorry, if I might. Um, you know, I, I actually, um, you know, as much as I respect everything that, and, and Steve-
One moment, I'm just waiting for them before they end.
And Steve, one more, one more thing is always, uh, like everybody said, great job finding a solution to the water issue. Um, I, I kind of stand with Jim on this one in that I think we, we should not go forward at this time. Uh, but that being said, I don't want to beat a broken horse. There is one more thing I would like to talk about is I noticed in French Square a lot of the benches that were dedicated to loved ones who had passed, uh, uh, totally beyond repair and were torn down. Um, I would just like to know if, uh, the council or if anybody in the town has any plans to have those replaced with the original inscriptions. I'm sure some families paid, uh, some money for their loved ones and that would probably be a good thing for us to replace.
Okay, thank you, Steve. You ready to answer that?
I do. Actually, tho- those benches were removed, uh, uh, councillor and they were brought down to the Dean Woods of House. Frank Constantino put a big effort into, uh, s- uh, salvaging a lot, a lot of that equipment. Uh, PPW helped, uh, with, with removal and transport. But those benches are, uh, down at the Dean Woods of House. There is plans, volunteers to refurbish them. And they were, uh, will probably be re, uh, reinstalled in the Lewis Lake area.
Thank you, Steve, thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Phil, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we have one more, we have one more public comment from Diane Sands.
Uh, you also have Tracy with her hand up as well.
Okay, one moment. Okay, Diane, go ahead.
Uh, I did call in earlier. Couple of things. I, I heard, um, the town council, uh, the town manager actually commented, um, on the safety as well as, um, I'm hearing my, um, as well as the Meredith, the, uh, board of health nurse. She did a very good job, but I'm surprised that I didn't hear about this before because I've emailed several times pointing out that the workmen did not have any masks or gloves and they would have to be socially distancing from each other. Nobody commented that to me, that that was in place over the weekend. I have some nice feelings that you think you need help, you guys, and told me we're working on that because I emailed everybody regarding my concerns about that. Also, it was never mentioned that patrons would be down the center, not just workmen. And, um, and the town manager commented on the litany of dates that this had been going on. It was really not, it, there was no emotion expressed about illness and death that was happening. And it's really visual, and here, it's not dates of seven years. We are well aware of that and nobody wants to push that any longer. But nobody was anticipating that a global epidemic with, you know, possibly hundreds of thousands of deaths would happen. And, uh, you know, we don't want to be part of that. That's the issue. We want to avoid people getting ill and dying. Declaration, but it's okay to do a project at the same time. Seems pretty hypocritical in my mind. As a member, I agree with all four of Lettieri and all four of Woods of Center that we can well afford to wait and not take the chance of making people ill and possibly dying. That's my point, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Denise.
Any other calls?
No.
Now, let the motion to adjourn, we have more speakers here.
Uh, Tracy Honan had, uh, her hand up.
So, Tracy?
Sure, quickly, I just want to give a shout-out to Frank Constantino. Um, in addition to what Frank Hallis said about the benches, Frank has worked tirelessly to make sure that those benches are removed, all the bricks will be repurposed, bulbs and plants have been removed, everything that can be removed and reused. Frank has put in countless hours and his concern and love for that square, I just want to give him props and, um, and, and kudos for all the work he's done.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Tracy. I spoke, uh, to Frank about the last Tuesday, Wednesday, and he had it under control. He's done an outstanding job, uh, making sure that things can be preserved that could be preserved.
And the flagpole-
We wanted to keep the trees and we just could not do that.
I think the flagpole will also be relocated as well.
I believe it's supposed to be a landing.
Okay, a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
To adjourn, seconded by Barbara Flockhart. First, take a roll call.
Councilor Jerram?
Yes.
Councilor Flockhart?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor LaCanti? Councilor Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Lettieri?
Yes.
President Boncorry?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.